Test one, two, three.
Like to call for all the PBD Planning Board meeting agenda for Thursday, April 17, 2025, held at 7:00 PM, PBD City Hall, Wigan Auditorium, 24 Lowell Street, PBD, Massachusetts. At this time, I'd like to suspend the public hearing and inter- uh, suspend the Planning Board meeting and enter into the public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the Planning Board of the City of PBD will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, April 17, 2025, at 7:00 PM in the Wigan Auditorium, PBD City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, to consider amending the zoning ordinance of the City of PBD as follows. Section 1 by amending section 3.1, creating a general business 2, GB2 zoning district. Section 2 by amending section 4.2.5 to allow for multiple-family residential by special permit in the GB2 zoning district. Section 3 by amending section 7.2 by increase in the minimum lot area to 10,000 square feet. Section 4 by amending zoning map, redesignating property 143 Linfield Street, assessors map 101, 1010, PBD Mass. from GB to general business to GB2 and general business 2. Section 5, all auditors and part of auditors inconsistent herein, hereby repealed. Section 6, the ordinance shall take effect as provided by law.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the City of PBD Planning Board. My name is John Kelty. I'm an attorney. I practice law at 40 Lowell Street in PBD, Massachusetts. Here on behalf of 143 Linfield Street Holdings, LLC, they are the owner of the property at 143 Linfield Street in PBD. The lot in question is 25,990 square feet. The lot in question is vacant. It currently exists on the westerly side of Corwin Street in here at Linfield Street in approximately or directly adjacent to number 143 Linfield Street. This is a matter that was before the City Planning Board and City Council approximately a year ago. At that time, I was trying to add residential to the GB zoning districts generally. There was resistance to that, to that notion inasmuch as there are certain large areas, most notably off of Tremont Street and Walnut Street, that are GB zoned. And there were various members of not only the City Council, but I think in general, members of the Planning Department that had some reluctance to adopting a, even by special permit, a change to the GB district that would create the possibility of residence. We went back to the drawing board, met with the Community Development Department, and over a period of months, we looked at different zoning districts. There would then be an issue of, you know, if we were to change it to R2, R4, or there would be an issue of spot zoning. And we then looked at other properties, what, what else could we include in this that was in that general area? And that didn't seem to be in everybody's best interest. So I'm here this evening, creating a new zone, and that new zone is GB2. And GB2, it's similar to what was done down on Washington Street years ago. BN would not, you could not get a liquor license for the restaurant that was there at the time, Willow Tree. The Willow Tree could not acquire a liquor license inasmuch as you can't have a liquor license in a BN zoning district. The then council for the owners, Harry Anklees, created BN2. And in BN2, which was that piece, you could do, you could do, buy special permit, you could do an alcohol license. So in this instance, I've created GB2. GB2 has all the uses that are available in the GB district as we see it today. We've added one more line that says GB2 multifamily. The requirements in terms of setbacks, area, et cetera, are all the same. In fact, you needed, in order to be GB, just the regular, the existing GB, you have the opportunity to develop a property that is 5,000 square feet. And the residents, in order to have, in order to take advantage and ask for a special permit for multifamily, you would need a minimum of 10,000 square feet. However, then, the setbacks, furniture, setback rear, front, and side are all the same as in the existing GB district. Height is the same. Both the non-residential and ordinary GB district allow three floors, 36 feet. There is no minimum lot or maximum lot coverage. And we are, they have setbacks, 10,000 square foot minimum requirement, 50 feet of furniture, 30 feet front setback, 25 side yards, and 25-foot rear yard. That district is what is before you this evening. I think that, oh, and in this, we would also, even if you provide this zone change, creating GB2 and providing this particular parcel at 143 Newbury, 143 Linfield Street with the GB2, in order to develop it as any kind of residential use, we would need a special permit. So you had voted favorably on the last year's zone change. I would hope that this evening, you would consider a favorable recommendation to the City Council by way of information. City Council will hear this matter next week.
Any questions from the board? Yes, go ahead.
Jack, would this be considered spot zoning as a term?
I feel not. I've looked at a lot of cases. I feel that if we had taken an existing zone, singled this, this particular parcel of land, singled this one out and surrounded by residential or industrial uses, suddenly gave it a business central, that would be a spot zoning. However, I believe this is, differs from that. It is not specifically to the advantage of one person. Any other party can ask for their property to be re-designated as GB. So I believe we successfully passed the test for spot zoning.
So your propos- proposal, the only lot that would be in GB2 right now would be 143 Linfield?
Yep.
Any other questions from the board? Yes.
Jack, it seems like the only GB zoning at all in that area are the two parcels that are adjacent to each other, 143 and the property to the, to the right. Did, did that, did that sort of zoning get applied to those parcels when?
The, the way we've advertised it is that this particular parcel, 143 Linfield, would be the only GB2. The rear is GB, however, we're not asking to change the.
No, just kind of wondering about the history of, of, did, to the spot zoning point, did these two parcels that are sort of next to each other alone on Linfield Street is the only GB sort of zones right now? Were those, was that zoning applied just to when those properties were developed? Or that, that first property where Stonewood used to be or where Toscano Forno is now? I'm looking on the assessor's map. That's the only GB sort of west of, of Washington Street in that area. So I was curious, historically, did, did those parcels get, get changed once before? However many years ago that was developed?
The, I think they were, when Corwin was there, I think they were industrial and GB came into effect in the city. And this, these parcels collectively were designated GB during the Karen Sawyer administration, when we changed, made substantial changes to the zoning. So that's got to be, what are we, eight, eight, 10 ye- eight to 10 years ago? Yeah. Prior to that, they were, the rear parcels were industrial, and I think these parcels may have been residential. This parcel.
I think I probably ask this question every time someone tries to change zoning or do an overlay. Could you, could you give us a little insight into what project is, is planned for 143? So that we have an idea of what residential you're, what's the residential project that, that you'll be here with? If, if the, if this was to be approved, what's the residential project that you'll soon be in here trying to get approved on this, on this parcel?
Approximately, it would be in approximately 7,000 square foot retail space with two floors above. And they would yield somewhere between four and five units per floor.
Residential.
Based on the size of the, of the units. And the reason, of course, for the residential is A, providing additional housing, but B, try to stabilize the economics of developing. My client is 143 Linfield, but that is Ramsey, Ramsey's Roast Beef. He would likely move over, become the anchor, and he has thoughts of developing a kind of boutique grocery, and that would take up most of the space on the first floor.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Yes.
Jack, it seems like the only GB zoning at all in that area are the two parcels that are adjacent to each other, 143 and the property to the, to the right. Did, did that, did that sort of zoning get applied to those parcels when?
The, the way we've advertised it is that this particular parcel, 143 Linfield, would be the only GB2. The rear is GB, however, we're not asking to change the.
No, just kind of wondering about the history of, of, did, to the spot zoning point, did these two parcels that are sort of next to each other alone on Linfield Street is the only GB sort of zones right now? Were those, was that zoning applied just to when those properties were developed? Or that, that first property where Stonewood used to be or where Toscano Forno is now? I'm looking on the assessor's map. That's the only GB sort of west of, of Washington Street in that area. So I was curious, historically, did, did those parcels get, get changed once before? However many years ago that was developed?
The, I think they were, when Corwin was there, I think they were industrial, and GB came into effect in the city. And this, these parcels collectively were designated GB during the Karen Sawyer administration, when we changed, made substantial changes to the zoning. So that's got to be, what are we, eight, eight, 10 ye- eight to 10 years ago? Yeah. Prior to that, they were, the rear parcels were industrial, and I think these parcels may have been residential. This parcel.
I think I probably ask this question every time someone tries to change zoning or do an overlay. Could you, could you give us a little insight into what project is, is planned for 143? So that we have an idea of what residential you're, what's the residential project that, that you'll be here with? If, if the, if this was to be approved, what's the residential project that you'll soon be in here trying to get approved on this, on this parcel?
Approximately, it would be in approximately 7,000 square foot retail space with two floors above. And they would yield somewhere between four and five units per floor.
Residential.
Based on the size of the, of the units. And the reason, of course, for the residential is A, providing additional housing, but B, try to stabilize the economics of developing. My client is 143 Linfield, but that is Ramsey, Ramsey's Roast Beef. He would likely move over, become the anchor, and he has thoughts of developing a kind of boutique grocery, and that would take up most of the space on the first floor.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Yes.
Attorney Kelty, this, this will require a special permit, no matter what, correct?
Not for the retail portion, but for the residential portion, yes.
And how about parking for the residential being in conflict with the business down below? Do you have plenty of parking there?
We would be bound by the parking requirements as they exist for residential use and for, so to be two spaces per, and we do have that. We would be able to create a field of parking in the front. We will need to go to the Conservation Commission because we are bordering on the pond, but our rear setback is such that we will, we have no parking, no, no use, no utilization of the land back there, except for access to the back doors.
The back doors. And how about parking for the customers, for these establishments?
That'll all be in the front, in the front portion. The building would be setback with a 25-foot, yeah, 25-foot rear yard, 25 feet back from the pond, and then building, and then a field of parking on Linfield Street. Not on the street, but in the front of the, in the front of the building.
And your, this is all speculation now, but two businesses, three businesses on the first floor or?
At least two and probably three.
Very good. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Yes.
Yes, through, through the chair, to Attorney Kelty. So you're proposing that the zoning, that GB2 is 10,000 square foot. So it, it sounds like the intent is not to cut up this lot into two to, two, two to three 10,000 square foot lots, right? It's just going to keep the whole lot completely intact?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And I missed your numbers, but I think you said likely four to five residential units per floor, and there'd be two residential floors on top of the commercial. Is that correct? Okay.
We thought the yield would be eight or 10 units, residential and the first floor.
Okay. Yep. And, and I know you probably have to come before us when you have a set of plans and whatnot, but I suspect that that would yield probably one inclusionary zoning unit? If it was eight?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Even if it's, maybe even if it's 10. I'm not, I'm not sure the.
No, it's E.
What's that?
E is the.
No, 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 I know. But what I'm saying is, is I'm not sure if, if 10 units makes them have two inclusionary zones. I don't think it does. Okay. That's it. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Yes, go ahead.
Just a comment through the chair. When we discussed this sometime last year, as you mentioned, Attorney Kelty, I think you're right, there was some apprehension with the impacts of the other GB districts throughout the city. I think honestly, the solution is a best-case scenario. So I just wanted to put that comment out there, that I think this is an adequate solution to a lot that frankly has been an eyesore for a long time. And I think any path to development to that lot to enhance the neighborhood, I'd be in favor of.
Any other questions from the board? Yes.
Through the chair. Jack, I'm sorry, you said the size of 143. What's the lot size on this one? What is, how big is 143, the lot?
Oh, 25,990 square feet.
Okay. And then from what, how, how did you come to the 10,000 square foot lot minimum for the residential for this? Did you get some advice, input from the city? How was that kind of, how did that come to be? We appreciate it.
How did GB2 come about?
No, just how did you come up with the 10,000 square foot minimum for?
Oh, we looked at, I looked along with the community development last year, we looked at some of the zoning requirements in other districts, and then we looked, we wanted to keep the dimensionals, the setbacks, the same. And it just made sense that if you were going to do multifamily, you couldn't do it on 5,000 square feet.
Great. Thank you. I like, I like the, I mean, I like the premise too on this property as well. It would be nice to, to see that developed. It's been, it's been a long time, so thank you.
Any other questions from the board? At this time, I will open it up to a public hearing, anyone wishing to speak in favor of this. Request number two, anyone wishing to speak in favor. Hearing none, I will open it up to people wishing to speak in opposition. Come to the podium, state your name, address, and your concern.
My name is Lee Cottens. I live at 149 Linfield Street. I'm a Nevada. I'm opposed to this because I'm, and I have to disagree with Mr. Kelty. I think it is spot zoning, and I have to disagree because I think this is an example of trying to change the zoning to benefit the owner, and there is no apparent benefit to the public or the city at large, just because that's what he wants. I think the zoning is appropriate the way it is now. There's no evidence that it can't be used the way it is now, excuse me, with the zoning that it is now. So I vehemently disagree that it should be rezoned. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
I live at 1B Laurel Street, South PBD. The house that I live in, on 1B Laurel Street, was built in 1960. Before it was built, the two houses, my house and the next door, was an empty lot. This is an empty lot. The PBD contractor built two capes on that property. One of them is on Linfield Street, and the, both of them face Laurel Street. Okay? So I know what an empty lot could be.
Excuse me.
Yes.
You have to be relevant to that 145, not.
145, 143.
Only 145, not what happened before.
I didn't.
Not what happened prior in other lots. You have to have your comment to this lot.
Okay.
Thank you.
I don't know how many of you remember PBD flooding, the square flooding? About 30 years ago, there was Craig's Pond overflowed. The water came down and came down Linfield Street, overflowed the sidewalk, came into my, my neighbor's backyard, came into my backyard, and came into my cellar. My wife said, Richie, the cellar's got eight inches of water. My, my sub take, my sub pump couldn't handle it. I had just put a rug, rug down, a thousand dollar rug gone. I looked out on Linfield Street, I looked out on Linfield Street.
Again, sir.
I looked out on Linfield.
Specific to 145.
I am, I'm getting there, I'm getting there. I'm getting there, my friend.
But you keep going around.
Okay, I'm getting, I'm trying to make the point. I get on my, my shoes, and I walk to where the water's coming from. I walk up Linfield Street to 143 Linfield, the empty block. I look over the block, that's where the water is coming from. Craig's Pond overflows. We are in the middle of a drought. The weather, the weather pattern is going to Kentucky. In a while, it will change, and we'll have days of rain, and that area will, 143 will flood again. Craig's Pond will overflow. I wonder why that lot was never built? Why no contractor in PBD built on that lot, as they did on my lot? Why was that lot unbuildable for 60-odd years, and now it is? I'm, I'm, okay, now, that's, this, that becomes a public health and a public safety issue, and whoever buys that, whoever lives there is going to be flooded out like those poor people down in Kentucky. Okay. This is spot zoning. I disagree with the attorney, and I disagree with what you folks did last year at this time. I, I resented, I opposed all that GS zoning, that whole, this lot is married to 139 and 141, they're married together. This was, this zoning was changed to accommodate 139 and 141, in my opinion. If this, if this, if the council or the planning board is serious about zoning New Hall Plaza, that strip joint, I, I would not be here if you rezoned CVS on Linfield Street, the strip mall on Linfield Street, Summit Street, a strip mall on Summit Street, the 7-Eleven on Lynn Street, the Low Mart, I used to call it the Low Mart on Lowell Street. on Lynn Street, the Low Mart, I used to call it the Low Mart on Lowell Street, that's a strip mall. If you're going to zone one, you should zone a mall. How about the one on Lowell Street, behind Jades? That's a strip mall.
Wouldn't this strip mall have to do with 145?
Because that's part of the zoning. You zone the strip mall, GS, that's what you did, you folks died, you guys did this. G, whatever it is, GS, GD, or whatever it's called. I'm confused, and I think that's where most of us are confused. You throw these numbers at us and names at us, we don't understand. The average person doesn't understand this. Okay, Lowell Street, Lake Street, even the Y Plaza, if you were going to rezone this area, you should have zoned all of them. And that would not be, I would not be here. That would be fair. But you're, you're singling out, you're singling out Linfield Street, and that's spot zoning, in my opinion. And I'm no damn lawyer. Okay, pardon my French. One last thing I'm going to say, one last thing I'm going to say, and I'm really upset here, because I, this is, this has kept me up a lot of nights. I have a lifelong resident of Peabody. I don't know how many of you are, okay? It doesn't matter. I've asked people, when they moved into Peabody, why did you move into Peabody? Oh, because the part we, when we left Boston, or we left Dorchester, or we left whatever, they had congestion, they had noise, they had pollution, they had crime, they had gangs, they had lousy schools, and it was overcrowded. They left those areas so they could come to Peabody. Peabody was, is beautiful. All right? So what they, they, some of them moved into West Peabody, 40,000 square feet up in West Peabody, zoning, plenty of room. They thought they died and went to heaven. Others moved to down the middle of Peabody, 15,000 square feet. Others moved where I lived, 5,000 square feet. Most of them helped Peabody. Some are on the planning board, some are on the city council, good, good people, excellent people. But a few, and I want, this is where I get ticked off, a few want to reciprocate, replicate, I'm sorry, replicate the inner city of Boston into Peabody, little by little. Linfield Street is the beginning. They can do it because not too many people are going to oppose. But I can guarantee, it won't be the end. If they can do it now, they'll do it throughout the city. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, gentlemen of the planning board, for all your work. I'll, I'll see you at the city council.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
Excuse me. Rich, I think you left it fine. Oh, I thought you left it here. For the record, my name's Russell Donovan. I live on 12 Quail Road, probably about 1,000 feet away from this development. As Councilor Keltie told you, they were here last year about this time. But what you, give you a little history, if you don't mind. I've been in Peabody about 50 years now, on the same location, and I remember when I'd been active in city council meetings, planning board meetings, conservation commission meetings. The zoning in 2004 did not have general business descriptions. Zoning was changed, as Mr. Keltie said, probably about 13 years ago, as he said Sawyer, Karen Sawyer was here. General business did not exist. Under the wisdom of community development, the planning board, and the city council, they created general business in two definitions. And in that definition, in the description, it says residential use are not allowed, general business, whether it be in downtown or in general business, period. So as a group, to use the term general business and have it allowed as residential is a gateway to allow the rest of those zones, general business, to change. There'll be, there'll be pressure on the city council, on the planning board, to include residential. Anybody who lives in Peabody knows we have plenty of development going on down here. Back in 1998, if those who read the water report, the water department said that our current, at that time, the current water needs were met by our reservoirs and wells. 98% of the water usage was supplied by Peabody Supply, and they commented on that report, only 2% during the summertime was needed from MWRRA. Today, as we speak, in the latest report, 25% of our water usage is from MWRRA because of development, because of increased water demands. Anybody who knows Peabody, drives down Peabody, knows the traffic congestion is terrible. Anybody who's been in the planning board, on the city council, or any of the public boards, knows the development impact that we have. About 15 years ago, under the Bonfanti administration, we were talking about closing McCarthy School. Now we're looking to build schools, a new, a new high school. Why? Because of development. We had to increase, there was a sewer moratorium on Linfield Street back in the 80s when they were developing the hills and putting new homes down there, because we did not have the capacity to handle the sewage. Under Mayor Teresian, he put a moratorium on building. It's costing the taxpayers of Peabody a lot of money for this development, so developers can profit. The confusion that's going to create here by creating a GB2 district is spot zoning. I heard Keltie, Attorney Keltie, say it wasn't, but it is. All right? I know the planning board, if you look at planning, if you look at the purpose of zoning, is to protect from over, overdevelopment, congestion, traffic, health, safety. 10 units, he said, two buildings, five and five. On that property, back in 2004, that was zoned R1. At that zoning at the time, you could put two houses there. Now he wants to put 10. If anybody who goes to Tuscany's, formerly Stonewood, knows the overcrowding of parking down there, that they park on Corwin Street, there's, there's parking problems down there. We have a public park across the way, and we have traffic all over Linfield Street. Traffic backs up to First Ave, it almost backs up to Goodman Circle. And it's next to a watershed property where, if it's, this property's going to be all pavement, there's going to be very little grass, two, five building, or two buildings, 10 units, how many cars will that be? 10 probably? Where are they going to park it? Where are they going to put the snow when they plow? Can't push it onto Linfield Street, they'll be pushing it into Craig's Pond. It doesn't fit the neighborhood. There are a couple of older homes that have been two families, three families down there before zoning. It was zoned, that area was zoned single-family. Leave it single-family, don't, don't abuse us by putting 10 units in a one lot. We don't need more housing. We don't need more housing on Linfield Street. We have over 50,000 people in Peabody now. We can't support that. Taxpayers can't support the growth. When he bought that property, he knew it was zoned GB, no residential. When he paid that price, he thought he could make money. His business plan should have been good enough to support it. He doesn't need housing. If he made a bad investment, so be it. We shouldn't have to pay for his investment. This is not for profit. Planning is for the good of the community. This is not for the good of the community. Thank you.
Anyone else speaking in opposition?
My name is Louis Adolino. I live at Two Victor Circle. I've owned the property next door to the lot since 1986, such as 147 Linfield Street. I know the lot's been vacant, it used to be the parking for the leather factory in the back of the pond. And I'm not opposed to Remsie's making a store there for him to move his business into it. I am opposed, like that gentleman just said, I'm opposed to putting 10 units on that lot. I don't live there. I have my youngest son sitting right there. I got my oldest son, they both live there. I have tenants on the first floor. I have a daughter that eventually might be moving into the first floor. That's the reason why I kept that house, that three-family house, was so I can put my kids in there, as they need it to be until they can buy their own place. I tried to redo the garage on my own property. It's a two-car garage. All I wanted to do was five feet towards the lot, come four feet forward. I put an application in, I was spent, I don't know, I was told that I had to, by Mrs. Del Negro, they had the conservation department, I was told I had to hire an engineer. I hired an engineer to look into it, spent $5,000 for him to tell me that I'm on a flood zone, and I cannot redo the garage. I can do, redo it on the same footprint, but not extend five feet to the side and come four, four feet forward. I'm not looking to go towards the pond, I'm just looking to go to the side and come towards the house four feet. So if I'm on a flood zone, the lot next door is not in a flood zone, it can be, you know, they can build 10 units on that lot? It doesn't make sense to me.
If I may briefly, in a flood zone, you can't build residential on a ground level. That's why there's a business going for the ground level, and your apartments would be above.
So that's how they escape this?
No, no, that, you, it's citywide. You can't build residential in a flood zone, on the first floor. Above that, you can't.
Now, I was asking to build the garage. It's not residential, it's just to store some of my antique cars in it.
I, I don't know of your particular problem, sir.
You know, I never had, I had water coming to my basement in the previous, like that gentleman said, when the water jumps over the pond, it runs down that lot, floods the whole street out. I had water going in my basement before, but never into my garage. And, you know, I, I don't understand how they can build 10 units in a business, and I can even expand my garage, so.
I, I understand. I lived in South Peabody, I know the water problem. Again, the first floor cannot be residential now. When your houses were built in the old days, these, these rules were not in place. So they were built, and then the floods came, a lot of floods came for a while. But I can't address your specific issue. What we're talking about is the zoning change for this parcel here.
Okay. No, I'm not, like I said, I'm not opposed to Mr. Remsie building, you know, putting his business there. I am opposed of putting 10 units there. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Hearing none, I will accept a motion from the board.
Mr. Chairman, just as a reminder, this would be a recommendation to the city council for their hearing, which I believe is taking place next week. Is that correct?
Yes.
So this will be submitted to the city council as part of this hearing.
Through the chair. Through the chair, please. Drew, what's, what's community development's position on this?
Yeah, community development has been working with Attorney Keltie on this, and they've been, we've been working back and forth with them on what would best fit and what would be the best idea out there. We have no objection to it, but we do want to, you know, hear further, it's, it's good to hear. We've a lot to say, but, you know, continue to work with Attorney Keltie on this.
If, if I could just make a statement. I feel that everybody who got up and spoke, every single one of them made, in my, in my interpretation of their presentations, made some compelling arguments. And what community development feels might be appropriate, and what the owner of the land might, must, might feel is appropriate. Clearly, these four people must have had better things to do tonight than come down here, so, so it seems to me that, that it will adversely affect their living, their living standard in South Peabody. So I, I, I fully intended on voting this, but when these people spoke, it changed my mind, and I will not be supporting this this evening, just.
Yes, go ahead.
Through the chair. To sort of, I guess, partially second what Roy just said, I, I think the folks that spoke, it's, it's nice to hear, and it is nice to know that there is opposition, and, and definitely to give additional consideration. I feel the same way as Roy, not that I necessarily won't support it. I suppose at this point, I'm still undecided. I would like to hear a little bit more information about the potential of being spot zoning. I would say to, to the, to the folks, and even though it, I would like to, you know, continue to pursue hearing about options and things like that for this site, because it is, I think it is tough to see it remain a vacant lot. You know, something appropriate was, would, you know, would be nice there. You know, originally, when I first spoke, I, you know, I was thinking that, you know, eight to 10 units with a mixed-use component is a pretty cute, you know, kind of little project to have there. I don't think it's the worst thing in the world. I do, you know, hope that people can, you know, take, take note of other situations in the city that have, that have sort of been opposed, and then something else is sort of shoved down people's throat in certain areas. So I do, you know, sort of caution that, that, you know, we should be working with, with people that want to bring nice things to certain areas and to develop things in a, in a respectful way. And I don't know that, I don't know yet that eight, eight to 10 units is something that I feel strongly for or against. It doesn't seem like, you know, it's not a high rise. There's some, there's some, there's some need being, you know, kind of satisfied there. So just kind of, you know, I guess a word of caution, it's, you know, there is someone here willing to invest in the city, do something nice, new, and in a quasi-respectful way, even though it might not seem that way right now. You know, that said, I guess I'm still undecided. I would like to hear more, you know, I don't know if there's any, any need to take action tonight, but I guess with an impending city council meeting, we, we may have to take action. So, yeah, I mean, I guess I'm, I'm kind of, I'm sitting here kind of undecided as well because of, you know, the Abutters' feelings. I will say, if I can't just ramble on for another minute, each point that a lot of you, that each of you made, there are some sort of flaws in those arguments as well, too. You know, building this development or some other development on this property is not going to cause the, the pond to flood. If that's going to happen, it's going to happen. It's not, you know, it might not help the situation, the water may need to go somewhere, but if it's coming over the banks, it's coming over the banks. It's not going to be because of this project. The gentleman that couldn't build his, his shed or garage or move it, again, like, like we said, we don't know the circumstance, how close you were to the zoning, you know, setbacks and side yards and things like that. I would assume that if something gets developed here and gets approved by not only, or voted positively not only under the zoning change, that, that they would also have to satisfy the zoning requirements of the area, so setbacks and side yards and all that stuff. So, so it's not that, you know, you'd be punished if you couldn't build something, but, but other people can, it's, it's that maybe they're going to be able to do it within the, the sort of setbacks, and maybe your proposal at that time might not have qualified. So, so, you know, I think like, you know, everybody brought up very valid points, it was heard for sure. But yeah, just, that's my, my two cents, I guess.
Thank you. Again, I will accept a motion.
Well, before I make the motion, I just wanted to be clear that the city council will be the final decision. Everything that's going to be built in this zoning area is going to need a special permit. Once something is actually proposed to be built there, it will, it will come for review. So, that being said, at this time with the zoning change before us regarding GB2 zoning, the addition of GB2 zoning, I would move to recommend the city council adopt this. So moved.
Second.
Do we have a roll call, please?
Mr. John Ford?
Yes.
Mr. John Ford?
Yes.
Mr. Roy Simos?
No.
Mr. Sean Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Matthew Genzali?
No.
Mr. Tom French?
No.
Mr. Thomas Betancourt?
Yes.
It's a tie. It's three to two, three to three. It's three to two, three to three.
Is it three to?
Three to three.
So this is a motion, though, just for recommendation, as, just to everyone, this is just a mo, this is, thank you, sir. This is a motion for a recommendation to the City Council. It was a, I, sorry, I was reviewing this. Is a motion to recommend approval or is?
Yes.
So it does not pass and so the planning board would just not have a, a recommendation?
Unless the motion could then change into what somebody else might want, whether it is a motion to recommend more information be presented or something like that, also could be done.
Yeah, I mean, through the chair. I mean, you know, again, I'm not, um, feeling like I'm in the know about the, uh, the time constraints of, of making such a motion to, to request additional information. Perhaps, you know, comment from city solicitor, um, and certainly, you know, perhaps a formal presentation or, or explanation from Kurt as well. And again, we're also, you know, still in the process of, of coming up with a master plan, a revised master plan for the city. Don't know what recommendations that plan would make in this area or any other areas of our city with regards to, to housing and should it, how it should be done. So, yeah, I mean, if, if a motion could be made to request additional, additional information, then I'd, I'd certainly support that or if that's allowed.
If a delay gave the board, uh, the planning board, uh, more opportunity, seeking more information, seeking maybe memorandum above spot zoning, those kinds of things, um, I'd be happy to, you know, extend the time. And they can do, you know, as we all know, they can do whatever they want. They can adopt it with the, but if, if, if more time was an issue for this board and you wanted more time, I'm certainly happy to provide that and at the same time, provide whatever additional information you may want.
Just through the?
One of us.
Sir.
One of us.
Sir, this is.
Sir, sit down, please. The vote is already cast. You cannot make a decision.
Sir, the public.
No vote for reconsideration. Not what you. I'm not going to.
This is, uh, just to rec, this again to the board, this would be a different vote than what was just taken.
Yeah, I mean, I will say, if I, if I can, I'm, I'm not going to sit here and be yelled at, so, you know, sir, if you can, you know, top it. I mean, I, I cast a no vote, so don't look at me and, and complain that we're, we're talking about other options here tonight. So, um, you know, not for it. Again, we, we made our vote on the recommendation to the council. That's not happening tonight. It was a, it was a, it did not pass. If there is still room to at least request additional information, I'd like to hear more. Um, but I don't know how to eloquently make a motion, so I could use a little help if, if that's an option.
Just through the chair to, to Attorney Kelty, just if you'll educate me. So if we, in, in, um, projects passed, we, we make a recommendation to the City Council in the affirmative and they do whatever they want.
Yep.
Many, many times. But are you saying that if we vote in the negative, which is what this was, it didn't pass, it can't go to City Council? Is that what you're saying?
Not me, no.
So, so if, if, if they can take, if they can take a recommendation from us to build something and, and then they can change it and not build it, so they must be able to, if they desire, then to take a "don't build it" recommendation from us and build it. Is that, isn't that not correct? It doesn't mean that this meeting, that, just 'cause this board, this, this board is not the, the gateway to City Council. It, it's, it's, I feel that it's like a, um, a, a request from a board that deals with zoning to give them s- better information to do their vote.
To your point, Mr. Semos, uh, the board also, you know, the board voted to vote for a recommendation of approval. The board also can vote or take a motion to recommend not approving this to the City Council as well and vote on that. This is, again, it's a letter of recommendation to the City Council.
Right. So you, so, so you can write the letter on behalf of, Tom can sign it, that says that the, the planning board voted three-three in this matter? And then they can do what they see fit? Is, that, that's what I say.
Yes, there's no, the, the City Council is not bound by a letter of recommendation. I actually believe that we possibly don't even need to write a recommendation. I believe that's happened in the past. But, yeah, per mass general law, with a city, the planning board needs to have a public hearing prior to, uh, a City Council hearing on this item. This is Attorney Kelty checking that box as part of our Massachusetts general law, uh, process. This is the city, you know, we, it is a public hearing. We're allowed the public to speak, just as they'll be allowed at the City Council, but the City Council is the deciding factor. Uh, yes, we can write a letter that just states it is a three-three tie and that's what the planning board took and that, and, you know, unless the board feels very strongly that they want Attorney Kelty to come back to this, then that just will be the action of the board and that they voted three-three, uh, to recommend, motion didn't pass, and that's what the planning, or City Council will receive.
That, that's the vote we took and that's what we should send, in my opinion.
Uh, board in favor of that? Is the board in favor of that?
Well, well, that's in reality what it was. We, we made a motion, uh, we put it out, it didn't pass. Uh, I, I think having the motion and voting on the motion kind of ended the matter. I'm not a lawyer, but is that the case, Attorney Kelty?
I would agree.
Okay. Well, thank you. This time, like to close the public hearing and return to the planning board meeting. First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of four-three, 2025.
Mr. Chairman, I would move approval, approval of the minutes of the April 3rd, 2025 meeting.
Second.
Uh, present, please. I wasn't at the meeting. Thank you.
Sir, Mr. Chairman, just before you continue, uh, yeah, the, the vote, I would say that the vote on this, there's not a quorum to vote on the meeting minutes. That should be moved to the next meeting.
It was, we had five. We had five. Roy, what, the president? Present, present. Well, two presidents?
Yeah.
Okay. Approval of the next meeting. Item B, A and R Land Court have none. Uh, item C, building permit plan review continued from the four-three meeting to the four-seventeen meeting, and I believe we have a late add.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to receive a late add, a written communication from Attorney Jack Kelty in a, in a matter of Zero Hotty Street, and he's requesting an extension of time until May 1st, 2025. Move to receive and grant requested extension.
Second.
All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Next item on the agenda is 60 Pulaski Street, map 53, lot 85, continued from the four-three meeting and again continued to the four-seventeen meeting, and again, I believe we have a late add.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to receive a late communication from Attorney Jack Kelty dated April 17th in regards to 60 Pulaski Street, also requesting an extension of time until May 1st, 2025. Move to receive and grant said extension.
Uh, just, just before this vote is taken on the, uh, extension of 60 Pulaski Street, I just wanted to update the board that we did meet with the applicants of 60 Pulaski Street, myself, Attorney Kelty, uh, the project engineer and the Department of Public Services, uh, the traffic, uh, reg, or sorry, in regards to the peer review, they came back in regards to the driveway. This was discussed. Attorney Kelty's, uh, the applicant's engineer is going back and they are working on trying to satisfy, uh, the recommendation made by the peer review. Uh, I would expect us to have some sort of update by the next meeting.
That's correct.
I'd like to second Mr. Ford's motion.
All those in favor? Unanimous again, thank you. Um, subdivision board action, none. Uh, correspondence memo from James C. Nicholas, engineer, City of Peabody, April 9th, 2025, referencing Stonegate.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I just, that in regards to this, uh, Peabody Living LLC representatives are here this evening to discuss their request to the planning, I take it you guys are here that we wanted to discuss. Uh, they're here this evening to discuss the request for bond release, uh, that they have submitted to the board. Uh, just as an update before they get here, uh, there's two bonds that were created, or there was two, uh, agreements that were created as part of the subdivision approval, if you remember. There was a $50,000 bond that was held for roadway conditions. Uh, the road was to be filmed prior to construction and then after construction, and there was a $50,000 that was held for that. And then there was a $286,000 bond that was held for municipal, or for the infrastructure to take place, roadway sidewalks, curbing and drainage that'd be taken over by the city once it was approved. They are requesting to release, uh, both those items, but they've been working with Department of Public Services, who's, uh, been working with them on trying to figure out an exact amount as well as what still needs to be done up there. I believe in your packets, there was a memo from Mr. Nicholas in regards to the $50,000 in that he did review the video and that he was satisfied with both videos in the roadway and that he recommended that the board do release, uh, the $50,000. Earlier today, and it should be, uh, there's a late add if the board wishes to discuss, but there was a memo submitted by Mr. Nicholas in regards to this request. Uh, and then also want to update the board that there was another item in there. It was brought up, I believe, at one of the other meetings that there was a light pole that was noticed up there, uh, that was in rough condition. Uh, Peabody Living LLC went out there, uh, fixed the light pole. It, it, it looks much better now. Hussein over at PMLP was in contact with Peabody Living LLC and he confirmed that I have, and there's an email from him, that the light pole is, looks fine now as well. So there is a, uh, two late adds, email from Hussein and then a memo from Attorney, or Mr. Nicholas of the board, so chooses to wish to vote to accept them.
I, I believe the April 9th memo from Mr. Nicholas is, is already in the package.
Then there is another one that came in this morning as well.
I have it. Mr. Chairman, in the matter of Stonegate subdivision, I would move to receive a late communication from James C. Nicholas, engineer, City of Peabody, in regards to Stonegate subdivision. It is dated April 15th, 2025, and the gist of it is the, uh, the planning board should not release funds at this time on that matter. Uh, move to receive.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Secondly, in regards to Stonegate subdivision, we have a, looks like an email from Hussein Karim, I believe Peabody Municipal Light, uh, the date on this is April 17th, 2025, and it's regards to a light pole on Campbell's Way. Uh, move to receive.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, uh, if you may represent.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, members of the planning board. Uh, my name is Yugo DiBiase. I'm part of the ownership group at, uh, Peabody Living LLC, uh, DiBiase Companies, uh, family-owned business. Uh, with me is my sister as well. If there's any more construction and technical questions, that's her side of the house. Um, so in front of the board, um, is our request for surety, uh, reduction. Like Drew said, we have two. The first one was a $50,000 bond, uh, for, uh, what was quoted in our subdivision approvals as off-site, um, surety. Uh, and then pursuant to subdivision control laws, um, before we got the lots released by the planning board, uh, back probably 18 months ago, uh, we had to post proper surety in a tri-party agreement between Peabody Living LLC, Enterprise Bank, the lender of record, and the City of, um, Peabody. And that bond was for $286,000 and, uh, uh, 286, 526.50. We completed the subdivision, uh, and sold the lots within the subdivision with the last sale closing, um, I want to say September of this past year. And then in the late November time period, we submitted a, um, a full release request of both bonds to the, to the planning board. That matter has been being continued from subsequent meetings since November to this point now. And since then, we've been in direct communication with the Department of Public Works, um, trying to address any and all issues that they may have. Um, and we continue to receive memos from them, uh, for items that they consider need to be addressed. Uh, we did about two weeks ago meet in person, uh, with the public, uh, with the Department of Public Works, myself, Paul DiBiase, the manager of Peabody Living LLC, um, Drew was there, uh, Mr. Politz, and Mr. Nicholas was there. Uh, and we discussed on the first matter of the $50,000 surety bond, we videotaped the roadway work before we started and we submitted that before we started, uh, to the City of Peabody. And then after the work was complete, we submitted another video that was, uh, both videos looked at, these, looked at and reviewed and certified by the civil engineer of record. Um, and the parties agreed that they would look at that after video and, uh, if everything looked okay, they would submit a letter to the board saying we shouldn't, um, release that $50,000 bond. Uh, the second part of the meeting was to talk about the items that are outstanding so that we can, uh, finalize this whole bond release and the eventual street acceptance by the City of Peabody. Um, and in doing so, there were a few line items, uh, a few areas of concern, erosion, um, uh, basins, uh, things cleaning up, uh, getting the grass to grow, things of that nature. Um, I will note that at the time, we didn't have the tree warden sign off on the trees. That happened last Friday and I believe a letter was circulated. I don't know if it's in their package, but might be. Um, and so any event, um, the gist of that meeting, the result of that meeting was, that was on Wednesday, the 4th, or the 2nd, and on Friday, uh, the 4th, uh, we met with Mr. Nicholas on site, um, to review the items that, the, the final items that were of concern to the Department of Public Works. Um, and in doing so, we game plans a strategy to, um, to rectify any situation and to get it up to the quality that the city is, uh, looking for. Um, and so after that meeting, we, we resubmitted our request for a full bond reduction of the $50,000 bond, and then we submitted a partial bond release of the bigger bond. The partial release of the bigger bond is looking to receive, uh, the approval to release individual line items that have been cleared and signed off by the relevant parties. The items that are still of concern, um, that are being remained or held are the areas in question, such as the cleaning of the catch basins, uh, erosion control, landscaping, things of that nature. And like Drew mentioned, today, we received a memo saying not to take any action on that item. Our frustration is that the spirit and the, and the intent of the tri-party agreement between the parties is that, um, the release of said fund should not be unreasonably withheld. Um, and I think that the items that we're looking to be released on this bigger bond have been satisfied, have been verified, have been checked. And my request to you is to consider all that information. And I'm happy to take any questions, any more specific details on it.
Any questions from the board?
Um, just, just a couple, I guess. So I happen to be in that area today. So I happen to be in that area today because we had some work going on up in the woods at an electrical substation, had nothing to do with your project, and I noticed there was a, what appeared to be, uh, a masonry crew there, and it looked like they were maybe raising a retaining wall by a, a layer or something. Is that, is that part of, is that part of the, the flood mitigation and the soil erosion stuff that's going on?
Hi, Deandra DiBiase, here.
Hi.
So I ran the construction over there, so any questions I can help you with. Um, all they were doing today was, um, top dressing with some loam, because we're hydroseeding tomorrow now that the weather's taken a turn.
I see.
Um, and putting some erosion control to make sure the, the individual lots runoff does not affect the sidewalks and the grass strips for the sidewalks.
So that they don't wash out onto the sidewalks, and then ultimately the catch basins?
Correct, correct.
Right, okay.
Yeah, because unfortunate-
I was just curious about that.
Yeah, no-
Because that would be, that's good, that you're, you're trying to deal with some of the erosion by getting grass to grow.
Yes.
I think that's the reason behind it.
So, um, correct. It's unfortunate because we can't force homeowners to water their lawn. We tried really hard, we pushed all of them, we were like, please do it. Um, we seeded everything. There are some lawns you can see that took because the people were really adamant. Um, some guy actually sawed at his lawn. Um, so what we did to prevent the homeowners' decisions from affecting us is we went around to do erosion control where needed, and we'll hydroseed tomorrow, which should hopefully take, because the weather is looking to be nicer.
I see. And, and I guess I can just make a comment in general to this board, that there's many instances in the past where we have released partial releases of bonds, um, and it only makes sense because the, the bonds that'll make sure that, um, sewers get put in, that trees get put in, that curbstones get put in, that the road gets binder paved and finish paved, uh, that the electrical gets put in, that the streetlights get put in, and those are all the line items I believe you were mentioning in, in that tri-party agreement. So I guess I'm kind of surprised at that, where it seems as though the lion's share of those line items are complete. Um, but, we, we also follow the, the, the directorate from DPS, because they're, they're our resident engineers. Um, I'd, I'd really like us to ask, send, send an email to Mr. Nicholas and Mr. Politz, and, and ask them if maybe at our next meeting, we can do said partial release of, of, of completed line items, or, or 150,000 of that, 280 something, or, or, or some, some reasonable number, uh, you know. The, just, just also mention, I, the chief engineer at PMLP, and that lighting thing, that was not a structural issue, that was a cosmetic issue, and that was 100% directly related to storing the poles with the wrapping on them.
Candy canes.
The wrapping is for transportation purposes, and when it, when the light poles come to the site, they should be stripped, and that's all that was. So they, they did some cleanup, and it's remedied. So, that's, that's all I have to say, thank you.
One question, if I, if I may. When, when did you finish your heavy construction, your roadway, your utilities, paving? When was all that completed?
So we finished everything, um, it kind of ties back into our first request, which was, I think, the end of November, so we would have done the final pavement.
So util, um, sorry, utilities and the first binder course would have been done prior to you guys releasing the lots, um, and then, because we wouldn't be able to get building permits without that being done. Um, and then at the end of September, beginning of October, we finalized the roadway and did the final lift of asphalt, I think it was the last week of October.
2024, and then we worked with the civil engineer to produce the required documents.
All right, this isn't going to make you feel good, but I've seen in the past where they wait for a, a freeze-tha cycle, to make sure everything stays put. Uh, I don't want to rain on your parade, I think you are getting pretty close to the goalpost, and it's my intention to release the 50,000 tonight in the, uh, agreement. Uh, hopefully if, maybe then, I don't want to speak for public services, but hopefully in the next meeting, we should, we should have something if Mr. Levin asks for a, even if they want to hold money, a reasonable amount of money.
Yeah, I, Mr. Chairman, if I just quickly, I know Mr. Jansali has a comment, but I just want to reply to Mr. Ford here. Uh, we were, it was Monday, I believe, there was, uh, I reached out to public services, I requested a, uh, an update on where I was at, I believe there was an email sent, then you've responded to that email. There, the, the city, or DPW had been out there on Tuesday, I believe, and had still noticed erosion controls, to which they then responded to, uh, PBD Living about these concerns. PBD Living today sent back, it was this morning, I believe.
Yesterday and today.
Yesterday and today, sent back photos, uh, and a response to that request. And in speaking with public service, they have not been out there yet to, uh, review what has been done and to look at it, so to the point of that, you know, we, we understand you guys are working to try to meet this. DPW, though, wants to make sure that when they take over that this site, that there will be no continued erosion issues, um, especially on the right of way, which we'll be taking ownership over, and so that is a main, uh, main point to what DPW is, uh, putting forth here, and that the reasons why they're not looking to release the entirety of the bond.
So, oh, okay.
No. Through the chair, if I could, Drew, can you just, I'm sorry if I was reading when it was mentioned, but you just, again, distinguish the difference between the 50,000 and the, and the, and the larger bond?
Yeah, the, the 50,000 was due to that this was going to be driving, you were accessing this subdivision, like many subdivisions, but you were accessing this subdivision through, uh, a neighborhood at the time, uh, the, the planning board and DPW, as well as, I believe, you know, residents in the area, and city councilors, were nervous about roadway destruction, uh, as part of this, uh, construction, and we, as part of the agreement, had agreed to, you know, PBD Living LLC had graciously agreed to put $50,000 aside, in that they would film the roadway prior to, they, the, uh, sorry, the entrance in the neighborhood, uh, prior to construction and then after construction, and that if there was no damage, then we'd release that $50,000. Mr. Nicholas has reviewed that footage, and he's determined that it's, you know, satisfactory, that the roadway is fine, and so that, that is that $50,000 that the board could release this evening.
So, so his memo and the, the, uh, the, the about face, April 9th to April 15th, is not related to the $50,000?
His, yeah, two different memos. His first memo from April 9th is in regards to the $50,000 roadway. The memo from this morning that you received this evening is in regards to the $286,000.
Gotcha. Um, I, I feel the same way, that, that I don't see any reason why the $50,000 can't be released. Uh, I would be, um, perhaps if we need to wait for a recommendation from engineering, in favor certainly of, of, uh, reducing, um, the bond based on the line items, uh, review them, it seems reasonable. Um, do we know what was, uh, the April 15th, what does he still have exception to, exactly?
So, yeah, so part of our, um, uh, conversation, uh, two weeks ago, and then the conversation on site was, um, in our opinion, um, the bond has specific itemized schedule of values. Um, and so for the areas of work that are not satisfied to DPW, those are the ones that are being held, meaning not released, or not asked to be released. So those are the erosion, those are the, um, you know, the final plans, the, the street acceptance, I mean, street acceptance is up to you guys and city council, so that's always out, out there until that end. Um, and then, um, things to do with the catch basins, cleaning them, because the erosion would get into the catch basins.
So, so aside from the seven or eight line items that you yourself have identified as, as not, you know, not complete or not requesting, there isn't anything that, I sort of, this ref, this, this memo, April, of April 15th, isn't in reference to any items, um, that you are seeking, uh, release of?
Uh, to the, to the best of my knowledge, no, and it's, the approximate number there was the verbally agreed-upon number between the parties, uh, two weeks ago, so that's why we're a little bit frustrated.
So the seven or eight number, uh, values that you're withholding from yourself, you believe is what is in reference to the April 15th?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Any motion to, um?
Mr. Chairman, in the matter of Stonegate subdivision, in the subject of a $50,000 bond held for a trap, tripathide, tripathite agreement, uh, move the board authorize release of these funds.
Do you have a second?
Second.
We have a roll call, please.
Mr. John Ford?
Yes.
Mr. Roy Simos?
Yes.
Mr. Sean Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Matthew Jansali?
Yes.
Mr. Tom French?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas Betancourt?
Yes, thank you very much.
The other matter, then, would be the release of the, the surety bond. Now, in regards to the amounts, and that was talked about at this meeting, we did have a meeting two weeks ago now, in which, uh, it was discussed with PBD Living LLC, I was there present in DPW, about items that needed to be done. I believe, what the issue is, is that, uh, there was items that were discussed to be done out there, which it seems like you guys have now done, which took place, well, I, and now, this is in speaking to the city engineer, Mr. Nicholas said that he was out there Tuesday, and had not, and they still noticed that there was issues out there. It seems like this, issues were remedied this week, though. Since then, I have not gotten a review or anything from Mr. Nicholas since then, though, stating that he is satisfactory with that, with those changes. So that's to the, to the point of the bond release, and where that kind of miscommunication, not miscommunication, but the issue lies.
Just, uh, through the chair, again, uh, I'm familiar with, you know, bonds for, you know, construction projects and things like that, but, um, is there a financial hardship, um, in releasing the bond? Do you have to renew and keep paying, um?
Sure, so-
Is it a one-time fee?
So, I mean-
Or is it just freeing up your bonding capacity for future-
Full disclosure, it's, it's no longer a loan bond with the bank, it's a cash bond. However, the mortgage on the property cannot be closed out because the bank is a party to a tri-party agreement, so that has continued to be renewed, you know, extended on behalf of the bank, you know, so I'm, I'm not going to speak for what the bank wants to do tomorrow, but it, we have been extending that because of this issue.
I guess I was just wondering if there was any benefit to having the partial release, like, to that issue, that, that, that the bank is still, you know, sort of tied to this? Does, does releasing all but $30,000 alleviate that, any sort of portion of the hard, like?
To be, to be, um, to be honest with you, I, this, the, the request as a partial release in front of the board is for items that are confirmed to be done. Okay, so the frustration on our end is that erosion control is not $286,000. The planning board and the City of PBD and the DPW all agreed upon the schedule of values going into the project. So now that the product is over, and there's an all bite at the apple, having us as the developer with our covenant on here, we're agreeing that there are items that aren't done. That's why we're not asking for that. And so for us to continue to kick the can down the road until we get a letter that says something, I, I don't think it's in the spirit of the tri-party agreement, actually, how it's laid out and agreed to by the parties. Financial hardship to me? I mean, I could, I could tell you one. Uh, we just pay taxes? Uh, no, I mean, um, it, it, you know, it's, um-
No, I mean, my opinion is, I mean, I've sat here multiple times when you all have come before the board, and I think at various occasions, members of this board have heaped praise upon you for the developments that you've done in our city, and I don't see any reason why, to believe that you wouldn't come back and, and honor the remaining items of your, of this punch list, if you will, for, uh, you know, for any sum of money, let alone, I don't think you're going to abandon it just because it's reduced.
The other, thank you, sir, and the other thing to note, too, is we are in this warmer summer months now, um, but until the street is accepted by the city council and the mayor, we're the ones plowing, we're the ones that are dealing with that stuff.
I lived that-
Yeah.
-issue as well, in the development that I live in.
Okay.
It's incredibly frustrating, it is the process, however, but, but, yeah, I understand that, and I understand that for the neighborhood as well, too. You guys, they keep coming back, uh, to watch city, uh, you know, sanding trucks, uh, just walk, drive right by you guys, I, I get it, I, I feel that pain as well, so, yeah. It would be nice to wrap this up before another, uh, winter season, for sure.
Oh, and if I could, just want, just, um, through the chair to everyone, so part of, just to clarify, too, part of the erosion, there are elements of the future public way, whether it be the roadway system, the trees, the, um, grass plots, the detention basins, right, there were, there are areas that, yes, we need to improve, the grass didn't, didn't take, you know, there are items that had some runoff, and so that's what, where our team is out there working on. With respect to the individual lots, this bond doesn't govern the individual lots, so we can't mandate that a private property owner seeds their gra, you know, saw, irrigates it, something, but what we can do to help us, which helps the city, is we can try to stop them, and so that's what we're doing, we're putting up, um, erosion control measures. Um, there, you know, I don't know if the city, by advancing this and eventually having, um, the street as a public way, if then the city has the ability to make sure that things happen, but right now, we're kind of stocking that middle part where, um, we would like to all see green grass, but, you know, we can't mandate anyone do that on their private property either.
I'm just curious, what the specific reason was that Mr. Nicholas gave you to, for not agreeing to a partial release? You must have had a conversation with, about getting his approval for a partial, and he's basically said no.
We, um, I wasn't there, she was there, my father was there, um, the agreement was to withhold $35,000 for erosion items that they were taught, they were on site on Friday the 4th, I think that's the date, um, that's what they agreed to, so then we submitted, I think on Monday or Tuesday, to the board, a partial release for $33,000 and change for those line items that the parties talked about, and the correspondence we got today was to not take an action.
We had also discussed during that meeting that the erosion control and the additional hydroseeding could not happen at the time, because we went, we met for the meeting and had a whole week of rain, and we saw it in the weather, and we said to him, hey, we're going to have to delay this for at least two weeks, which is why we didn't request those in the partial release, so.
Yeah, so just, just to clarify, because I think you, I think you might have misstated it, the, the, when and, when and if, well, hopefully when and never if, the partial release is granted, right? The partial release wasn't 35,000, it was everything except 35,000.
It was, yes, correct.
The withholding was 35.
Yeah, yeah, we were holding the-
Okay, just, just to clarify that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Correct, sir.
So it's the, I mean, it's, it seems like it's almost like 90% of, of the amount.
Correct, it includes the final lift, lift of asphalt, all of the granite curbing, the handicap sidewalks, signage, um, doing any type of, um, striping on the streets, all the street trees, which, um, the tree warden confirmed, they're all in good health, they're all budding, they actually look fantastic, um, you know, pretty much everything besides ensuring that the grass strips now grow.
Yeah, I mean, there's just some miscommunication or confusion, because you met with him on the 4th, on the 9th, there's a memo that says in favor of releasing the 50,000, no mention of the partials, so it's a little confusing to me, just, where you had a verbal conversation on the 4th, there's a letter five days later that didn't match your conversation.
I would agree.
And just for Matt's, the, the off-site work they're talking about is on Pearl Street, right, the street leading, w- once you go the whole length of Ralph-
Ralph to Pearl, yeah.
You come upon Pearl, take a left, right, because, because you're, all, all this work is being done towards the left.
Correct.
Right, and that's the part that's been determined that your vehicles didn't damage that, and that's the release we just voted on. Correct, thank you.
The, the $50,000 is now null because it's been released, that they did not damage the road, that. The issue is in regards to, Mr. French, what you were talking about with this discussion, is that, yes, it was agreed upon about work that needed to be done up there, and that that's why we received that memo from, uh, Mr. Nicholas in regards to the roadway, and that there was no mention of the bond. They were waiting for that work to take place. When they were up there Tuesday, they still noticed that there was issues up there, in which they said to PBD Living LLC, that we still see that there's issues up here with erosion, and now they have gone out and listened to that, or not, the recommendation, have gone out and done this work. DPW has just not been able to go back up there yet and confirm what work has been done and what's been done up there. That's why they're requesting that the board not take action on this, at this time.
Um, I, I know closeouts are hard, um, is there a step that has to occur before the as-bills are prepared, or, I know that's a pretty significant-
They're, they're, they're in your hands, they're, they're in the city's hands.
Oh, all right, but that's one of the items you held from yourself.
Well, because, because practically speaking, um, the as-bills should some, should we have to change something right now, right? I mean, that's, that's so, but everything, everything in our opinion, that's why out of the gate we said, because it's- But everything, everything in our opinion, that's why out of the gate we said, because it's best if we can just say, okay, everything's all done. Let's all verify everything. To your point, we were going into the winter months. DPW made a comment that they couldn't see the basins because of snow, fair enough. And the tree warden wanted to see the trees, you know, during the spring, fair enough. But the, you know, those items that roadway as-built, that could change if some erosion measures needed to, like, you know, there, there were things that, that could change there. The final street acceptance plan, I mean, these things are going to go parallel track probably with city council at, at that point. So, you know, we're not, the full bond amount is never going to be released until this street is accepted. And it's, 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 if I, you know, just my last comment on this is that the bond is not for $286,000 for erosion control measures. The bond is for the 24 line items that have been agreed upon, that DPW marked up and increased from our original estimate back when we submitted this bond to the board, that the city of PBD, my, PBD Living and the lender all agreed to enter into a tri-party based off of these values.
And I apologize, we keep talking about erosion control and the measures that are taken. Is the issue that you haven't been able to remove them yet?
No, so we, so there's been runoff.
Yeah.
There's been runoff, so, so when we asked for the bond to be released, DPW went out and took photos and rightfully so. There's areas that the grass didn't grow. So there's been runoff that goes into the sidewalks. And now that's a public works problem and we understand that. So we went out, we cleaned the sidewalks, we went back into the, into the basins, make sure there's nothing in there. We offered to put back, back the silt sock. But the, the root or the start of that erosion, a majority of it, is with individual lots. And so what we, we did yesterday and today was we put a mulch sock at the bottom of the lot line against the sidewalk so to at least stop any more erosion from happening. There, there are other elements on the basins that we just have to address and, and things like that. But those are the pictures that were circulated from DPW a couple of weeks ago to us.
Just for me to ask a question, very rare.
Sure.
Do you do not have an agreed amount of money that you could release from that 286,000 from the city engineer? Is that correct?
We don't have, correct. We don't have, we don't have a direction either way. We just have, please don't take action.
And in reality, we cannot release amount of money that we have not gotten an agreement on from the city engineer and the city departments. So we released the 50,000. I don't think there's anything else we can do right now until we get an answer from them.
Thank you, sir. Is, could there be a request that we have a partial release in front of the board by two weeks from now? I mean, is there, you know, again, this has been going on since end of November.
Yeah, I mean, I, I've spoke to Jim Nicholas. Jim Nicholas is out yesterday. I spoke to him this morning. He had not been able to get up there yet and look at what done, if it was done. I would have to believe we are going to have something soon from DPW. I talk to Will every single day, asking for updates on this.
I know you do, I know you do.
How do you guys know that I'm constantly calling?
I bug Drew every day, I bug Drew every day on this.
Jim and I'm constantly calling Will and, and talking to him. Because I think, to reiterate what has been said here, I think, you know, the subdivision up there looks great. I think we're really excited about the houses that they built. I think that, you know, there was, I don't even want to say issues, but there was erosion issues that took place up there that, you know, were noticeable. And I think that PBD Living LLC is trying to mitigate that and fix those issues. But to the chairman's point, yes, they have presented us with a number in which they believe should be released. And by all means, that could be exactly what that number is and DPW could agree to that. But without having their decision here in front of the board saying that, yes, we agree upon that amount. And to the point is that the, DPW will be taking over this roadway. The city will be coming, you know, the owners of all of the stuff that we're talking about here. And so the city is, you know, not looking to take over something and that there is consistent erosion issues with and that were not fixed prior to taking over. And that is where Mr. Politz's stance is and that he does not want to take over a roadway that, you know, has persistent erosion issues and wants to take over something that is, you know, completely finished prior to that.
Through the chair. Tom, if you'd allow, I'd like to make a motion to request that, that engineering department review PBD Living LLC's memo dated April 9th. And in particular, their, their schedule values breakdown and request for certain portions of their $286,000 bond to be released prior to our next meeting so that we may take action at that time if we so choose.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you.
Thank you all.
Uh, just sort of heads up for you guys, we are not open tomorrow. We're not open Monday, so I'd have to believe that this memo will probably come sometime next, or the motion will probably come sometime next week that you guys will probably just send to the bank to let them know.
Yeah, I mean, thank you.
Could, could I just ask, ask you guys a question? So are the, are the homeowners upset with you guys that their land is eroding? Has, has anyone taken legal action that, okay, so?
Not that, not that we know about.
So once they buy, once they buy the land and, well, the, the land improved by the house, right, from you, they're responsible?
They're responsible for, for landscaping, yes, because there's-
So, yeah, you put some sort of base in, in your contract with them?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Hydro seeded, some number of inches of loam, so on and so forth.
X amount of plants, but the, but the, but the longevity of that is only as good as maintenance and care and water.
Right, right.
The other situation, unfortunately, is most of these homes were delivered July, August. There was a watering ban, so unfortunately, these homeowners-
Right, well, I was thinking of that when you were mentioning that some of the lawns died, right.
We had some that it was like perfectly hydro seeded and we had some cool weather and it popped and it died within a week.
And, and another problem is that the zoning, the, the, the planning board subdivision rules call for a very low percentage grade, allowable grade of roads. And if, if there was a little more grade allowed, then you would have had less slopes and, and maybe minimized blasting. So there's, you got, you got kind of things opposing you in different ways, right? Because nobody likes a lot of blasting because that would have lowered the slopes as well. But raising the road a couple of degrees would have minimized the, on the lot slopes. So, all right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you all for your time.
Have a great night.
Much appreciated, thank you, Drew. We'll be in touch. Okay, perfect, thank you.
Any matters probably before the board?
Just as a heads up to the board, in your packets this evening to take home, there'll be a public hearing next week at the meeting of the, first in regards to a tree public hearing over on Foster Street, submitted by the forestry department. And I believe there'll be a few different zoning amendments coming before the board in the coming weeks as well.
We will need a motion.
Need a motion?
Second.
All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you.